All right, uh, we're gonna call to order at five fifty-three.
Five thirty-two.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, five thirty-three. Whew. All right. Um, we're opening up the public input period right now, uh, for RSA one eighty-nine seventy-four. So if, uh, anybody has anything they'd like to say at any time, just feel free to get my attention, et cetera, et cetera. All right, uh, do we have any announcements? All right. Molly.
Thank you for sending the minutes. Um, we did bring the first financial. Um, we have encumbered as much as we know. We still are working with the school because you get your board's part of the week early. So we have to have it prepared even earlier than that. So it's mid-September when we're building this. Um, we encumbered as much as we know at that point in time. We're still working with Brandon and his team to encumber all the student needs. We don't have a comparison to the previous month because this is the first month. So next month you'll have the comparison. Um, did anyone have any questions?
I did not. Is there any questions?
Um, I did not on the report.
Okay, great. That's been a July time.
Molly, the only follow-up thing that I had was, because I know we discussed it a few times, is the extra pay, um, for pairs when they sub for a teacher. Like, I just wanted to get an amount for that. And I, I think, like, you didn't know at the timeline item it was in. So if it's, I guess if we're not, if we hadn't, uh, had a total for that, can we start now? Like, for this school year? Just so we can keep track, like, how much, you know, per month we're designated, uh, towards that.
Okay, what I can do is I can, um, ask our accountant to kind of keep track of that. And I can put a note at the bottom of this, maybe as a running total, so that we can keep track of that.
Yeah, okay, that would be good.
All right. So you're all done, Molly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh, approval minutes, September eleventh. Looks like you've got some notes.
Yes, so I do. So I need to skip to the... Under five approval of minutes. Uh, Mike has microphone, needs to be changed to Mike as in Michael. And then under new business, school days noted in regards to pickleball scheduling needs to come out. And that's all I have for edits.
Anything, Kirsten?
No.
To vote to approve the September eleventh minutes as amended?
A second?
On favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Bowl's report.
Thank you. We have our, uh, Student Let conferences coming up. Uh, we, we pushed it back, um, a couple of weeks, uh, this year due to, uh, less early release days. So, uh, that'll be Student Let again, which have been very successful, uh, over the past couple of years. November second, uh, is our first day from three-thirty to six-thirty. And then November seventh, uh, which is the voting day. Um, so half of that day will be geared towards, um, Student Let conferences. Enrollment numbers, uh, as of nine-twenty-nine, uh, twenty in kindergarten, twenty-three in first grade, twenty-three in second grade, twelve in third grade, twenty-one in fourth grade, nineteen fifth graders, for a total of one-eighteen. Uh, community events that we've had, uh, we had a wonderful turnout again for our family open house. Once again, second year in a row that we've kind of shifted, uh, the way we do this with making it a family event. Um, and, uh, feedback again from, from families and, and from staff, um, with kind of the way we do it with scavenger hunts and all the visitors that we have in the building was, um, again, really strong positive feedback. Uh, our PTL is having their huge fall festival this Sunday. Um, rain or shine, it is scheduled. Um, if it, if, if it is gonna be, uh, a horrible forecast, uh, they're, they're looking to move what they can inside, uh, for Sunday, but we're hoping to have a wonderful turnout. This, this is gonna be their, hopefully, biggest fundraiser of the year. So it is a community event, so please get the word out there that it is gonna happen, rain or shine. And then, um, our students later on this month will have our annual Harvest Fest and Halloween Parade on that Friday before, uh, on the last Friday of the month. Uh, I'm gonna go through our special education data. Uh, Paige Tool, our MTSS presenter, um, had a, had a family, um, thing come up, so she will not be presenting tonight. Uh, so she's gonna push that to the December meeting. This will be similar to the data that we shared last year for special ed. Uh, we have, uh, this year two full-time special education teachers and slash case managers. Uh, they provide specialized instruction to students on their caseloads. They provide consults, um, to, uh, staff that work with their students. Uh, they go through the referral, evaluation, and IEP writing process. And they also participate on the student teacher assistance team. Uh, we have one full-time speech language pathologist. Uh, she provides speech and language services to the students on their caseload. She case manages, uh, students that are speech-only. She provides tier-two slash-three interventions to those students that, um, do not qualify for special ed but need, uh, speech or language support. She also provides consult, uh, to staff. She participates on our student teacher assistance team, and she's also our Medicaid coordinator for the building. Uh, we have one full-time school counselor. Uh, she provides tier-one services for all EKES students. She provides, um, the second step, uh, social motion curriculum, uh, to all, to all classrooms twice a month. She's our five-oh-four coordinator, and she, uh, this year for the first time has taken full ownership of the student teacher assistance team and facilitates that team. And a lot of that, what she is gonna present tonight, you would find more about, you'll, I, even more about that in December. Part-time special education staff, we have a board-certified behavior analyst. Uh, she works here two days a week. Uh, she creates functional behavior analysis and behavior plans. She supervises, um, any RBTs, registered behavior technicians we have in the building currently. We don't have any. We have one going through the certification process. She provides consult, uh, to our, our staff. And, uh, she also participates on our student teacher assistance team. We have an occupational therapist, uh, that is here three days a week. She provides OT services, uh, to students with I, with IEPs and five-oh-fours. She participates on our student teacher assistance team. She also provides tier, and I have on here one through three because she, she pushes into, um, our kindergarten classrooms to provide writing support, uh, to our kindergarteners in addition to providing tier-three and tier-tier support to our students. And is available for consult as well. We have a physical therapist that is an S, uh, our, our BCBA and our occupational therapist, uh, we contract with, um, to have them come into our building. The physical therapist is an SAU sixteen employee. Uh, she's here less than one day a week. And she's a, provides physical therapy and consult services. Our school psychologist, again, we will be contracting with. He or she will be participating in IEP process and conducting evaluations. Our special ed teachers, our speech language pathologists, they're all trained in Norton-Gillingham in addition to our K-three, uh, sorry, in addition to our K-through-three teachers. Uh, we have twenty-four students, uh, in our school with IEPs. We have two students currently in the referral process. Uh, we have two students, um, that are identified preschool students. And twenty, twenty-point-three percent of our EKES population, um, have IEPs. And just, uh, our average group size for our group services is three. Uh, we provide small group instruction and consistent progress monitoring throughout. And our providers provide both pull-out and push-in services.
What do you mean by preschool students?
Do you want to explain how that works?
Yeah, um, this district is responsible for any children after the age of three that are identified as having a special education disability. So that could mean a variety of things. It could mean they could come to the school for a couple hours a week for, week, a couple hours a week for speech services. It could be that we place them in one of our SAU preschools or community-based preschool and pay for it, and, um, they get their special ed instruction in one of those settings. Or we might visit that setting and send our staff visitors. It's a whole rainbow of options for our three-to-five-year-olds.
Um, the twenty-four students on IEP, that ratio, is that, do you have any idea if that's common for the other elementary schools?
It's very comparable.
It's comparable to, yeah, to this, to the seven schools. It's, um, slightly above the state average, but...
SAU is slightly above the state average, um, so, but... Where a lot of other schools that have, um, the resources that we have are slightly above state average. So we're not that far off from Oyster or Portsmouth and Berlin in terms of percentage of students that are identified.
Brandon, did you say twenty-point-three percent? When I could do the math?
Yes, twenty, twenty-point-three percent, yeah.
All right, cool, thank you.
Um, does the speech and language teacher, she's not a case manager for any of the IEPs. The two special ed teachers are the case managers.
She case manages students that have a speech-only identification.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Which is mostly our preschoolers up until the age of six.
Any other questions for...
Any other question?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we get into policy? Because this might take a little bit.
Um, I think it's, I hope it'll be quick.
All right. Uh, is that the next thing on the agenda?
Superintendent evaluation.
No, Chair's report. Uh, superintendent eval, yes. Um, so we met last week, week before. Um, still Esther's getting kind of all her ducks in a row. And, or Dr. Esbel, sorry. But what is going to come out of that, of this evaluation is going to be much more comprehensive with so many more actionable and, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Okay.
Actually, yeah, outcomes, and we can actually measure it. Like, the previous superintendent evaluations, I, I felt were kind of fuzzy. I don't know if you even, you kind of saw it last time. This is very, we're gonna do this, this, and this. And we're gonna do it this year, next year, this, and the evaluation is, did you do it or not? It's pretty straightforward. It's, um, ambitious as well, but she's not shooting for any low bars. So I've been very happy. She's also made the, uh, she's made it pretty easy on the committee because, um, she's driving what she wants to get done. And it matches a lot of, uh, when we did the superintendent, uh, search, we did a big survey from the school and everything. She's taken a lot from that. And so a lot of what the community's looking for, what a lot of different people are for, and kind of pushing it forward. So, um, it's not done yet, but it's, it's sure looking good. So far, pretty impressed.
Yeah, I agree with that, uh, looking at her goals and seeing what she's already started, um, I think we're in a good direction.
Yeah.
Like, I've seen stuff in the Carriage Town for the community engagement piece, and definitely measurable. And you can already start to measure those things, so I agree.
Yeah, and she's, um, if, if you haven't seen it, there's outreach that she's doing. She's making herself much more available to the public, um, all around. So that's, it's definitely a very good thing to note as well. All right, uh, yeah, let's go, policy.
Policy, okay, so we met, and we received an outline of the topics that we're gonna cover over, uh, said months. So there's a little bit of a plan. I think with the goal in mind that we're gonna try to, like, keep it minimal, like, I think maybe to five policies a meeting. Depending on what the legislature does, that could change because things could get added in. But there is, like, a schedule. I don't know if you want me to go over it, I just wanna look at it, of what we're gonna cover each month.
Looks good to me.
Looks good. I highlighted it there. Yeah, so there'll be these, like, set topics, but then there could be other things added on. So they, like, each month we'll maybe have a theme. So, looking at the policies here that we covered. So DFA is investments, and so we need to review and adopt that every year. So that's our investment policy. And then policy EB, Workplace Safety Program and Joint Loss Committee. So the school board updated both of the policies in the last school year, EBV and EBCA, and they were previously in this policy. So they're coming out, so that's a change there. And the revision also includes specific requirements of the Department of Labor, Labor, relative to workplace safety programs, as well as the Joint Loss Management Committee. So our SAU office will be designing a process to build and implement a joint loss committee this school year. So we will inquire from the Department of Labor as to the required makeup of the committee within, uh, SAU's structure. The committee will work together to develop the workplace safety programs required in law. So we are gonna have another committee. So it could be, one of us would have to be on that, but, um, they're looking into the requirements for that. So, and that will meet, like, probably sooner than later.
And this committee, if I understand it correctly, it will have, like, staff from the building on it, right?
Yes, yeah. So it'll be, like, kind of a big committee. I think that's why she wants to kind of figure out, like, logistically, who has to be there.
Yeah, exactly. If we did it the traditional sense, it would be a very large committee. Um, they are, we're hoping to do just an SAU joint loss committee, but mostly, usually it's a district-wide joint loss committees. You would have your own, you would have your own. So that's a lot of time and a lot of redundancy. So we'll, we'll find out. But traditionally, yeah, you would have staff from each building, because they have to check out their building, report back to the joint loss. You have admin, you have school board members, you have SAU, you have facilities, tech. Like, the list was on and on and on.
Yeah. Yes, so that was that on that one. So then the next page, um, you see policies one, three, and seven. You have the codes on the left, the title, and then the reason for withdrawal. So these are all policies that, uh, have been put up for withdrawal. And so I went through, they changed a little bit from the policy meeting, so there was a few updates. So I'm good with one, two, three, five, and six. Uh, looking at the titles, the codes that are taken away, and the reason for withdrawal, like, that all lines perfectly well. The only, um, issue that I saw is number seven, policy U N D B. We actually don't have that policy. I wasn't able to find it on our website, so we don't need to remove that one. Because it doesn't look like we have that one. And then, uh, number four, policy G B A A R, bullying, harassment, and retaliation report form. So it says it's replaced by A C, which is true. That lines up really well. But then it says the form for reporting will be embedded in the anti-discrimination plan and protocols document being designed. And so the reason why, I called Heather today, um, but I haven't heard back. But I don't think that we should remove that one until there is an actual, uh, form in place to replace it with. So I pulled policy G B A A R, and it's the bullying, harassment, and retaliation report form. So if you remember at the joint board, Andres did a presentation on the protocol for responding to harassment and discrimination, and he was working on that document. So it's still being, um, designed. So I didn't think that we should get rid of the reporting form that goes along with policy J I C K, which is people's safety and violence prevention, until, uh, we have that form.
Did he have any clear, um, timeline for the form? Do you know?
I know the meeting, I know they met today. I know it's completed. It's a mouth, it's about, um, the committee. It's, the form's completed. I'll say that. So I think they met today, um, probably to go over it and then sort of providing administrators PD on how to use it, and then roll it out. So it's completed. It's a completed form, but it has not been implemented yet to this point.
Okay.
Is there any harm from not taking it down till next month?
Yeah, because, well, I think what's good about it being up on the website is, like, say if a, a fifth grader goes home and says, you know, "I was bullied today." Like, they could print this out from our website and send it back in with their kiddo. Or they could send an email, but it's just, like, Brandon's gonna need the answers to these questions anyways. So I just, until we had something more solid, I didn't wanna, like, leave people in limbo. Yeah.
That's fine.
So...
And then, so...
And everything else looks good.
So number seven, it just doesn't exist, so...
Uh, yeah, I searched the website, um, under East Kingston policies a couple of times today, and I did not see it.
Only thing I will say is, one thing I've learned when I came up to the SAU, is just because it wasn't on the website didn't mean that this board didn't adopt it at one point, and it just never made it up to the website. So in the past, when I've had this question, they've sent me back to meeting minutes and go through whether or not it was adopted. I'm not sure, I'm not suggesting to do that, but I'm just saying, just because it wasn't on the website doesn't necessarily mean it wasn't at one point adopted when our system wasn't as buttoned up in terms of putting them up on the websites.
Okay, so there's no harm, no foul in including it then for with, for removal, just in case if it is there.
Yeah, and I, um, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it says in the notes from the original meeting that, um, Stratum has a different one, but it didn't mention EK, so, yeah, let's just...
Okay. Is that it?
Yeah, that is. Is there any other questions?
No, not many.
Nope, I think we're good.
All right, so why don't you make your motions on what to do?
Okay, sounds good. So I make a motion to approve policy DFA, policy EB as amended, and to remove policy EGA, EGAB, GBA, IHBA-r, IHBAA-r, and UNDB.
Technically, I think that is IJNDV.
Oh, gosh, I don't have my glasses on.
Oh, I see.
Oh, yep, it is. So correction on that last one, IJNDV. I wonder if that's why I missed it.
There we go. All second. On favor?
Aye. But I did have my glasses on earlier today. Search the website.
All right, um, what we got next? Safety and security, this is, uh, now me. Um, we are meeting next Thursday, I believe. Wellness?
Wellness did not meet. Um, there was enough, not enough participation. Um, there was only three or four of us that could meet that day. So she canceled the meeting, um, and I asked when they were going to reschedule, and she has not received, not returned that information to me yet. So, to be determined, um, I hope. I'm gonna go into community engagement. Okay, so community engagement. We had our first meeting, um, last week, October third. We had, um, five or six of us there at the meeting. We talked a little bit about the history of community engagement, why it was part of our goals for the school board, kind of where it came from. Appar, I, you know, I learned a lot. Apparently it came through when we were in COVID, that they were looking to do some bridging out and, and reaching out so that people could feel connected, um, during that. Uh, and we also talked about moving on from that, um, that we're no longer in that space, and we really need to start making some bridges across multi-generations, um, within the town for us to, to be engaged and be a community. So, um, we had, had some back and forth as to what has happened in the past. Hosting breakfasts at school, having, um, school board members meet for open forums and Q and As at the library. Talked about, um, inviting, you know, the community to our showcases and to our plays and things that were going on. So there've been multiple efforts to really get out there into the community and to welcome people into our, into our school. Um, I also think we had a nice conversation about maybe shifting it off of the school particularly and making it more community. And I'll use, uh, pickleball as, as an example to that. We seem to be a multifaceted space over here, right? So the softball field, we're getting pickleball. And that triggered some conversation about our outdoor classroom out back and how that is a community space with outdoor trails, um, and has not been used even prior to COVID, which would have been a lovely space during COVID while we were, uh, engaging in learning here. So, um, I really feel like our conversation of history and our conversation of what has happened got us to a place of what needs to happen. Um, and what needs to happen is, uh, some efficacy, some real involvement from everyone across the community. And so we talked about looking for experts to really help us look at that space out back. People who are engineers, people who are strategic planners, people who are landscapers, people who are construction workers, people who are in education, who could look at curriculum. Maybe looking at, uh, people who were or are in business who can help us with fundraising. And looking at it from a lens of being, "We need you because this can't happen without the community engagement" versus constantly needing volunteers. Because we, as a community, can use out back quite a bit. There could be a stage back there, there could be picnic tables, there can be, uh, discussion circles for, um, Socratic method or Harkness that are going on. We could have artists back there who are designing, um, and the list goes on and on and on. So, uh, the team of us decided to give roles, so we're all working on, on things. Uh, myself and another team member will be working on doing some PR and community outreach. Um, we have people who are going back there, taking pictures. I'm going to need to ask our town planning board for some zoning stuff so we can do the correct, what is that, property lines, I guess. I would love someone who's good with CAD, um, in an architectural design space, so we can look. And then I started really thinking, um, well, I know all those people, and they live at SST. And so for it to truly look like a community, I'm going to be talking to the director of SST and actually making an authentic task for our kids at SST. And now really bringing them in, because they house all those skill sets that we're looking for them to draw. But in the meantime, uh, between now and the end of November, it's, it's strategically planning, is this the time we should be cleaning that out before spring comes? Is this the time that we need to be recruiting for people? But really, what I walked away from this small committee was that it's these six or these five that are always doing it. It's the same people always doing it. And right now, for this to work for us, we need a, we need a commitment from the community. And how do we do that? So I'm asking for people to help, um, and really give us their expertise in something. I don't know, Brandon, if you wanna add anything?
No, you, you captured it perfectly. I, it was, um, uh, at our staff meeting this afternoon, you know, Abby and I talked a lot about that with the staff, and it was, uh, extremely well-received. Because for the people that have been here, it is a place that they used to go to. And miss it terribly. And, um, it's such a beautiful space out there that just needs some TLC and some people that really wanna make it work. Uh, so, you know, we, we, we briefly touched on it today, but, um, you know, we, we talked about how it's not just a, like, a quick fix, it's gonna be over the next couple of years.
Correct.
And, um, how we can involve our students in that process with, you know, celebrations of learning and that type of thing. So here in the building, and, you know, again, it was well-received, and I think, you know, the wheels are already turning with some of our really creative teachers on how to involve kids in the process. And I think adding SST is the perfect move. Especially if some of those kids are East Kingston kids, you know, and...
Correct. I, sorry, Andy, the, the other piece, I, it more of a curriculum standpoint. You know, the state has asked us to look at pathways, right, and career pathways. And this is a perfect opportunity for our elementary school kids to see pathways in action with kids either from their own town or siblings, right? Um, or parents who work in these particular pathways. And so it really embeds a whole bunch of stuff that we need to do as a state, that we need to do as a school community, and then internally... as a state, that we need to do as a school community, and then internally what we need to do, um, in leadership for, for school. Sorry, Andy, what were you going to say?
What are you talking about?
Oh, see, so that's, so if you go, if you go behind the.
Here.
Back here.
That little space right there?
Yep. When, if you go behind, there's, there's a sign, and it says, nature trails and outdoor classroom, and it is covered right now
Oh, really?
By foliage and vegetation. And if you walk back there, there are even, uh, trust wires still up there, there are broken down, uh, classroom benches, you can tell that it, it was used. Um, one of the things that I said to Brandon, and I'd like to talk to Paige Tool about it, is in, in getting the Brown Center over here from UNH and doing student leadership with, again, that's a couple of years out, um, but we have, we have an opportunity here to really create a space for all of us. I take Brooke back, I've taken Brooke back there almost every snow day in snowshoes and walked around. Um, I'm hoping Ms. Cuddle will, will be involved in this, um, as our new PE teacher, um, when she comes in. You know, and the, and the art teacher, going out there and, and doing things, um, having walking trails for everyone in the community.
I had no idea that was there.
Yeah, I would, I would encourage you and recommend to go take, go put some boots on and, and take a walk back there. Um, with, this, uh, does not need to be the name, but Zoe and I, and are trying to create some, some verbiage and, and how to PR it, are, are calling it King Fisher Park. Um, and because we didn't wanna, we didn't wanna label it just this, it's a school classroom, because we don't want it to be just a school classroom. We wanted it to be, um, a symbol of something that we could all get behind. So, in the moment, we're calling it King Fisher Park, that doesn't need to stay. But, um, I, I am open to questions, um, I will say, anyone who's watching or has questions, my email address and phone number are on that, will be on that flyer. Um, it's gonna be a three-year process, I think, um, in looking at these massive projects that people do. It needs to be systemic, and then it needs to be sustainable, and the only way to do that is, is through a very, uh, strategic process. But it's not a one-man show by any means, so I'm hoping people get involved.
It seems like that would be an ideal thing to have grants out there for.
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if our new grant person at the district level could help?
Mm-hmm.
So I have heard of this space, um, I wasn't aware that there was like enough space for like a classroom space, but I remember, uh, my daughter Ava went snowshoeing out there. So they have used it, so are you suggesting like a ropes course, or you're just open to the ideas of using that space?
So there are low, right now, low trust wires already embedded in the trees. I don't know what the space, being new to the community, I don't know what the space looked like when it was in full force. Brandon, you weren't here either, um, so I'd be very interested in hearing from the teachers or from community members what it did look like and what its purposes were for. But I think we have an opportunity to really make it what we want. There's a lot of space back there. Um, one of our members actually said we should get the goats and just have the goat, have the goats get in there and clean it up, and it wasn't a bad idea if anybody owns goats and wants to, uh, let them eat. Uh, so we, I don't know what it was for. I see it as a place, a, a learning experience for everybody, because we could have artists go in there, we could have, um, classrooms go out there. You could do writing sessions out there, I mean, curriculum-wise and instruction-wise, I could go on and on and on, what could happen out there. I think as a community space, walking your dog, meeting for book clubs, nature walks, photography classes, you know, it could be used for a lot of different things. So, like I said, Brooke and I go back there often, uh, in our big boots, and we look around and it has great potential.
Excellent. Uh, duh, 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 the goal updates. Let's go to our reports.
Uh, goal number one, I do not really have anything, I'm just, uh, we're waiting for next month, we're gonna, um, have the presentation of all the fall data.
Fall data in-house, uh, still don't have any word on state test scores yet.
Okay, yeah.
Number two, I imagine number two for you is gonna be, I just talked about everything for quite a while.
Yeah, the, the only, the, the goal, um, we meet as a commi- committee four times a year, that's not, that's gonna be updates of what's happening. Um, for us to be able to implement some of this work, that's, we're gonna start meeting probably every other week. And, and I'm gonna try, um, to have, try to get some subcommittees or tasks out there that can get accomplished, and I'll update you on the tasks as they, as people help with that space, right, cause I need the experts to actually do that, so.
Um, on the pickleball thing which you brought up, um, I met today with, uh, Negrello and a couple other people, and so that's moving forward. So that should be, the goal is to have some sort of league or sign-up or something starting in spring through the community, so.
Do they, um, have the, is the painting gonna happen in the spring too?
Uh, the painting may happen before winter.
Okay.
The library's trying to figure out if they're gonna do, where there's gonna be, and we'll do it all at the same time.
Okay.
So I'll keep you updated.
Alright.
Alright, as far as, uh, five-year capital improvement plan, we got roof quotes?
Yes, uh, we had, uh, three roof quotes, um, the one oh six that we were so concerned about is much, much higher than the other two. Uh, the other two, uh, one was seventy-two thousand, and the other one was seventy-one thousand, I think, six something. So, obviously, uh, two quotes look, you know, look better than the other one. Uh, one of the companies, um, talking to Rusty Lester, the director of, of facilities, has used multiple times, and, uh, is, is, uh, very well respected across the SAU. Has done work in Kensington and, and other buildings, um, so, uh, we, we have those quotes, now it's just deciding, um, who we wanna go with and the timeline and how we're gonna, how we're gonna fund it, which we'll talk more through the budget.
And then, yeah, we should probably meet as we're doing budget stuff for the five-year plan, so. Alright. Um, new business, do you wanna state that one, or is that me?
Um, I think, having just had access to the information tonight, um, I think you should do it in non-public, per person's request.
That's, okay. Uh, any old business? So, um, does that amend our reason to go into RSA? Or go into non-public?
Um.
Or would that?
I think you could use.
Would that cover it all?
Well, yeah, I think you could do non-public under C.
Okay. Alright, um, just real quickly before we go into non-public?
Uh, just a very, uh, general, uh, question on, uh, timeline for, uh, seeing the draft of the budget for next year, when is that normally?
Um, do you know when we'll start having draft budgets?
We're gonna, I mean, I, I think in the past it's been
November.
The first, the first draft is November, and then, um.
So, yeah, so the timeline is, we work, um, together to form the budget, um, in review with Renee and the school board, and then the, the first draft with the school board in the, the November meeting, and then we go back and make any tweaks that we receive feedback for, to then come back in the December meeting. And then, then the December meeting is when you would take the vote on what you wanna take to public hearing, which happens the first two-week session, uh, in January.
That's, perfect. Alright, uh, anything else? Uh, we're gonna go in notes, non-public, thank you both for coming. Molly, thank you as always. Alright, um, so we're gonna go into non-public per RSA ninety-one A colon three, two, A through I.
You make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and like to adjourn the meeting at six nineteen.